Sorry. Okay, I've been up early and donuts and coffee all day long. So I don't think I've had a vegetable in over.
Sounds good. We'll be done by 5:45.
By like seriously, that's my life. As soon as I start feeling better, it's just coffee to catch up on everything. Okay, hello. So getting started with our work session. Thank you so much all for being here and doing some action research to see how this is letting our work session and our regular sessions. So thinking about it, we decided that we would on our work sessions look at our working agreements and see how that aligns with each other. So our working agreements will be embrace conflict and seek to resolve positively and respectfully. We address one topic at a time. We value diversity and invite multiple points of view in order to maximize the mission. And we respect each other's views and thoughts through active communication and participation. Thank you all. So again, work in agreements, keep those focused, have them out in front of you. And again, one of the other tenants of because some of this concepts come from adaptive schools, which all your leadership, quite a few of your leadership team was out recently and enjoyed that time with them. But is the idea of suspending judgment. You don't have to respond immediately. We don't have to reach an opinion immediately. We respond that way. I think I am connected to the Zoom meeting link and Kat see me. That's from Natalie because she's participating virtually today.
Could you text her the link? Do you have her cell phone?
Thank you. I think she thinks she's on. Okay. So if we're gonna look, we're gonna start with our budget capital monies best grant application, talking about some of it. Of the on our monitoring that we're gonna be going over budget and budgetary items.
So we thought it was important and Dan and Matt are also on this call. An annual monitoring report is a budget update. And we just think because of the significant, significant conversations we've had about on what do we do next? And we could dedicate this time to really be on the same page and ask some, some important questions. I wonder if we could. So one of the things that you have a hard copy right here is we're kind of calling it the fork in the road diagram. A hard copy. And this is, this is one of the things Ken and I think we'll need to talk about for these work sessions because some new information might come up. And as much as possible, I'll put it there. But this was something that DAC worked on just a couple of days ago. And I think this is a good starting point for some possibilities. And then Dan and Matt can also kind of share what we're kind of working on. So just I'll walk you through this. Suzie, let me know if I missed anything. So as we know, the November 21 course failed. We got some good feedback along the way around what's next and some opportunities there. We shared last meeting that feedback from just the middle school and the person folks who prefer to potentially stay down there. We have some, some work we need to do. On February, we just submit the best grant and we can see from from this best application, we can go through that. I'd just like to walk through first and kind of see if there's any questions. So we submitted that. We can talk about the match in a moment. We will pre-convene for the DAC will provide some more recommendations back when we meet in April 2022. Then June, we'll know more if we receive best grant. We have two pathways. One, it's funded. And the other, it's not funded. And that's why Dan and Matt are on the call. And really taking step back in turn, in terms of getting a great bond package together that really allows us community engagement. Some more architectural renderings and drawings that would consider shoring up the middle school if we were gonna invest there. And or in addition or add to that building space would take more time than what we could do by April 1st. And if we're talking about having a really solid bond package. So some possibilities as we're thinking about, we just applied for the best grant. How do we find that match? So we went to the drawing board with Dan and Matt and thought about the idea of a COP. And Dan can talk about that more specifically. You have a hard copy of this as well in your, in this in your packet. I'm looking at this certification or anticipation overview. So the idea is that the, the match could be funded by us, you know, the potentially leveraging an asset like the elementary school as the financing structure. And then what we were also projecting is, and we can talk about this more, that you can see in this projected amount of $4 million that it gives us a little bit more about a million extra dollars potentially to invest in the uprightness of the middle school. This is a significant move. That's been something that has been on the minds of folks at the middle school for a very long time. So Dan, let me wait one second and I'll keep going through this pathway. So if it gets funded and we, and the board approves and kind of considers this COP option, we could potentially start some of these projects this summer. And Dan can talk through that. We would skip the November 2022 election cycle. That would allow us a longer time period to engage the community. Ensure that our drawings and our architectural plans are a long-term master plan that is aligned and then go for bonds November 2023. If it's not funded in the bottom pathway, it could potentially still be do a COP. But it would be without that best match of a $4 million. So we could still move forward, just kind of thinking about it. So Dan, maybe if you could share or give me questions for Dan.
Sure. Can you guys hear me okay? And I believe Garrett's on. Garrett, are you on? Or at least he was on.
Guys have.
If not, if not, no problem. So that's okay. Just to be, just to be certain, do you guys have in front of you that, that slide I sent you, Elizabeth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, great. And so, yeah, we did discuss some other options as far as funding the match. And in terms of, you know, going forward, if, if you are looking to, which I know you are applying for a best grant this year, there's other ways to fund that match, the local match and some districts that are either in terms of timing, you know, they're unable to do a bond election or whatever. One of the options is to fund it with what's called a certificate of participation. And that is an annually appropriated lease by the school district that is not subject to a vote. And it's not subject to a vote because it's annually appropriated. And so some districts have done, have gone through this option in order to secure the funding. And then if they do have the expectation of having a bond election in the future, we make those COPs callable. Or we, we place them with a bank with a redemption provision allows them to be called at any time. So then we can pay those off with bond proceeds. Because it's important to note that COPs are paid, these will be paid through your general fund. And so until you're able to pay these off with bond proceeds, you know, that would continue to be, you know, revenue would be coming from your general fund to be paying those on the, the CMA annual payments. So that's, that's one of the options that we've, we've worked with few districts over the last few years and have done so successfully. In this case, we would be looking to act as as bank solicitor and we'd actually issue an RFP for other banks to place this with a bank to make sure that we get the right call provisions and the lowest interest rate. I think the call provisions is likely the most important part here, especially for you. Because again, we would want to pay these off with a bond, hopefully in the future. As far as timing goes, you know, I think what we would be looking at as far as securing, you know, because if you're doing an application now and you're issuing COPs, we would want to just time that so that we can provide that, that local match should you, should you receive the best grant. Elizabeth, I think you, you mentioned something about construction in, in April, and I wasn't quite following that line of timing. So you may just want to run that by me again. But that's, you know, as far as the, as far as the structure goes and looking at the project amount and what the borrowing costs would be. Again, these are indicative of, of rates today. Interest rates have been going up pretty dramatically over the course of the last three weeks. Obviously, we've seen a lot of pressure, inflationary pressure from CPI coming out today was seven, above 7%. And we expect to see interest rates continue to go up over the next year with the Fed expectation of raising interest rates five to six times throughout this calendar year. So I just say that because these are rates as of today, they certainly will change between now and when we actually executed this transaction. If we do, and we would again send out an RFP to get indicative rates from a bank. Select that bank and they would actually give us a 45-day lock period or they have in the past. And so that's helpful where we can lock the interest rate while we've complete the financing and approve all the necessary documents. So that's, that's one of the options. And I mean, that's what we were exploring with the district now. And I'm happy to answer. Is there any questions the board may have? Or Matt, if you had anything to add as far as timing goes, I'd be happy to answer those as well.
Yeah, no, I think what Elizabeth was talking about construction wise, we'd start spending money in August, September on design. Construction would be April, but April of 23.
Got it. Okay. And so if, you know, when you do need that funding in August and you do know that you have that best grant secured, you could, you know, we could issue those COPs in conjunction with, with when you need those funds in August. Probably would make sense to try and secure that while rates are, you know, still relatively low. I don't have any expectation of them going down. Now, they certainly may, but as of right now, the expectations are for rates to rise. So if it's a cash grant, which I'm guessing it, it likely would be, you know, who's to say exactly what's gonna happen? But I don't think there's a lot of availability as far as lease purchase grants go from the state. So if it's a cash grant, you know, you would have that funding available sooner rather than later because you wouldn't have to wait for a bond election to pass.
Are the rates generally higher if it's callable?
You know, they are, but not by much. I mean, when you do a bank placement, it's different than when you actually do like a bond issue and you go out to the public market. The banks don't, they're not that concerned with the redemption provisions. There are at least a few that will, you don't, you don't see much of a penalty to have a callable at any time. Whereas if you went to the public, you know, public market, you typically have a five or a 10-year call provision. And you would pay a penalty for a shorter call. But in this case, it's not, it has not been punitive to, to have a callable at any time.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just don't understand. So a call provision, is that like a prepayment penalty?
That's correct. Yes. So this would not have a prepayment penalty, but you call what they call par.
Okay, great. And then when does the best group make their decision on our request?
So. Oh, go ahead. June, yeah.
I'm sorry, Elizabeth.
That's okay. That's okay, Dan. We'll do the interview. I believe we did it in April. Is that right, Matt?
It's just hard to read.
My handwriting.
Yeah, I think it was, I think it was early, like the very first of May. But yeah, it's about the first of May for the interview and then end of June for that. When you find out.
So can we get the, the certificates of participation? Can we have that kind of in our back pocket, so to speak, before the best hopefully approval of our submission so that we're ready to go? Or does that worry about the 45-day lock period on the loan interest rate?
Sure. I think what we would probably, you know, I'm thinking in the timing, how that would work. It's, it's cost, if they lock it, you know, there's a penalty to then break it. So I can't, we wouldn't be able to RFP for the bank, select a bank and then have them lock that rate. We could certainly put the RFP together and get indicative rates from all the banks. We could even go so far as making our selection for who's, who, which bank we will go with. And then as soon as we hear from the state that you will receive that grant, we could lock it that, you know, that next day. And then that would start the 45-day clock.
It sounds like rates are gonna go up in March almost assuredly.
Yeah, the expectation is for at least 25 basis points with a lot of folks thinking they might raise it as much as 50 basis points.
And a lot of market. A lot of market participants will price in expected raised increase, rate increases into what they're offering now. So in the broader bond market, you might hear that there's a 70% likelihood priced into two rate increases in the March meeting. So these are also forward-looking banks that will set their rates based on what they expect interest rates to do. So it's not like if you wait until, you know, the last week of June before you set your rate, that you're gonna wake up one day and the rate is 50 basis points higher.
But couldn't we go before the best approval for a higher amount? And then if best is approved, then it's kind of like you get an extra, you know, give an extra million dollars. What you already planned to see what he's for. So you could knock off some other projects.
Um, I don't know if I follow that. So do you have, so are you talking about having, you know, you have your match and then you have a portion of over and above what your match is? And that's what you'd be ashamed to see what he's for? Okay. Yeah, you could certainly, you could certainly do that, I think. And then if, if for some reason, you know, you didn't receive the match or you didn't receive the grant and you still had these needs, you could still do a small COP for whatever you need to be done.
This is for Suzie, but how much can you really afford?
You know.
Out of our general plan.
I mean, we know that we have so much different maintenance every year. So we're not getting everything done with capital that we need to any given year. But for a number of years, we had a couple of big lease projects that were part of our capital. So that was the lights there and then the iPad lease. So with, with those, our, our general capital fund was 450 to 550,000. And those were a couple hundred thousand of that. And so really, I think we continue to keep that high, like the 450, 550 transfer for capital. So I think, you know, we definitely have that space to do that 250, 300,000. It would just continue our defer. But we're already not doing everything you need for every year anyways.
So why we also.
I'm just thinking, so we could actually go for so give you a petition on this, go for an amount of money, hope that the best grant came, that the best grant didn't come. We know that we got, say, $3 million that we can afford to pay back with our general fund. And we could start projects like today.
Yeah. And that's where the, the prioritizing of the elementary schools, as we talked about last, the roofs and also the secure entryways. And actually Kat did some fantastic work with JD in terms of going up to some, getting some cost estimates on camera security at both the, the schools. So we built those into the projects and you could kind of see those ads. But that's why we added. So if you look at this sheet of the table that Matt produced for us, our owner responsibility with our current best is about 2.8 million. Best responsibility is 1.1. So you see it's about $4 million. That gives us about 1.1 extra million dollars to do, for example, an enhancement at the middle school and or a portion of that for ADA at the high school that we know we're still under that clock for the CTV OCR, OCR audit. So gives us a little bit of cushion. I am meeting with some folks from GOCO next week around, maybe they could provide, right, if we can bring some cash to the table, then maybe GOCO could fund a community project with that up there activity field and how it connects to trails and open spaces above us and some outdoor classrooms, spaces. Just because I, I know before I got here, the school had started its architectural drawings or what that field would look like.
Yeah, we just have to partner for GOCO with, or district cannot write the GOCO grant. But we don't have a park and recreation record.
We now have a parks and direct director.
Oh, okay. So that was on the board like 27 years ago. And I was like, we somehow.
We're actually partnering to provide parks and opportunities using art fields potentially. So.
So financially, right now, at the market, the way it is, it would be our best interest to move forward with this and keep the best grant in our back pocket. If it comes through, then we'll be set much better off.
Especially knowing that we've planned, that we would probably plan to improve bonds in the next couple of years.
And pay it off.
Right, right. And that would be the following year. That would, you guys would be up for reelection that year and the bond. That's exciting.
The COP is not depending on the best.
For all of you.
And just, you know, in the best application, thanks, Matt, for everything he did for that. I mean, he is really so.
Donating his time to us.
Yeah. He, we put in there that it would be either a bond match or a COP match and just kept it open. So the best board knew that that's how we would potentially fund it, not knowing, you know, you all, your perspective tonight.
So is there, so two questions. If we have the COP and I have $4 million inside some of this thing and put out there, if we have that already done, does that make our best grant more attractive or does that change it at all?
Oh, Matt, what do you think? Oh. He wasn't surprised.
Nope, try again.
Can you hear me okay?
There we go. So sorry about that. So that's not supposed to be one of the criteria best used to make a selection on their grants, really the need portion. But that's not to say individual voters who are on the board don't look at it. So it's, it's hard to answer that, I guess definitively, but it's not supposed to be.
I think historically, while it may not supposed to be, and it's not written in their policy or handbooks, I think I have seen that that has helped in some cases.
It sounds like there's already, I mean, to follow up on Gary's point, there's really not a downside to try to get the 4 million COP and do that. You know, whenever we can have a meeting, we have a vote at. If that needs to be voted on, I don't know that. We should be that much for their edge, right? Yeah. And getting it approved.
That's some. Yeah, and that's some of, that with the DAC, we said, what are some pros and cons of this? And these are some statements that, you know, created. The pros is it gives us more time for design planning or the strong package, more time for community engagement. Still time, still allows some projects to move forward and to taxpayers considering other funding versus just tax increases. Important to say that we've been, we've heard them, the vote. The cons, of course, is increased escalation costs over these years. I can't read my handwriting, deferred. I'm not able to address the ADA in all schools, but we're addressing pretty significantly in two of the four. And we can do some ADA at the high school.
I do think like with the continued deferred maintenance, I mean, we definitely have a lot, but even this story Elizabeth and I met this year on plans for next year and what we were gonna spend capital on, we're kind of in this like spot where we want to spend money on things, but knowing that we would go for bond in the future, we want to be real careful in what we are spending on. So you're not doing it just to do a bond. My house projects are like that all the time. Yeah. So I mean, it's to have a couple of years where we have lower capital. It's kind of the right time because of that coming up.
I think it's question on this, on this document here, that difference in 2021 and 2022, I just wasn't clear on.
Yeah, what changed? Yeah, Matt, do you mind speaking to that? And some of that says added cameras as well.
Yeah. So you know, the main pieces that added are, come from two, two pots, I guess. One is added scope and the other is escalation. So added scope was the cameras. We put the camera packages in on both safe entries. We expanded the remodel area. We didn't expand, but we took the remodel area and admin at U-Pass that was in the bond, but not in best and put it into this best grant. And then the rest of, rest of it is, the other half of it is escalation. So depending on what report you read, escalation for 2022 on construction was about 22, anywhere from 20 to 25%. So building a building costs 22%, 25% more this year than last year. One of the areas that that's hit the hardest is unfortunately for us roofing and insulation, both of which is a big chunk of these, this best grant. And so we, our construction costs basically went up about 20 some percent. And then on top of that, everything, the way best works is they, you give them your hard construction costs and then you, they build in contingencies and design fees based on percentages of that. So as that goes up, everything kind of what I, we always call below the line, you know, goes up as well as because we don't know where construction's going. When we met with Cheryl from Best, she said that a lot of people underestimated their escalation over the last few years. And she encouraged us very highly to put a number in. We could guarantee we would live with. So we actually put another 20% to cover any escalation we see from this point forward. So if you think about that, that's escalation is a big chunk of it. It's 20% of the old number. And then that, of that new number, we had 20 more percent on top of that. So, so it adds up quick.
And added in the roof at Manitou Elementary, some mechanical replacements.
Yes, yes. Thanks, thanks. So overall added scope was about 370,000, if I remember right. 200 in cameras, about a little under 100 in that U-Pass remodel. And then the rest was, yeah, we in talking with Cheryl, we put the mechanical units we know need to be replaced anyway at Manitou since we have to crane them off the roof because the roof insulation doesn't meet current code. So everything kind of gets lifted. So you have to pull the mechanical roots off, rebuild their curb and put them back on. So since we're going through all that effort to completely disconnect them, take them off the roof and put them back on, it's like a good time to buy new units and best allows that as part of their grant. So we did add the mechanical units.
Well, that makes perfect sense. And I, the only thing I was less surprised about was that the, that U-Pass was more expensive than Manitou Springs Elementary School.
So what, a couple of reasons. One is Manitou Elementary School, we're only doing about half the roof. So we're doing the 1953 and 1988 additions. I may have the years wrong on this. We're doing not the original building, everything but the original building where U-Pass is the entire roof. So it's actually a bigger area at U-Pass than it is at Manitou.
And if we get the grant, the money's gotta be spent in this proportion. Is that kind of locked in?
Not exactly, but the scope is the scope. Like we couldn't go back to them and say, we want to replace, you know, or go do something at Manitou Elementary that's not in the scope we listed in the grant. If that makes sense. So we couldn't go remodel a bathroom at Manitou Elementary with the money. We have to do the roof, the mechanical units, the safe entry, the little bit of admin remodel. So if, for whatever reason, though, the bid cost comes in high at Manitou and low at U-Pass, they're fine with that as long as we're still doing what we said we'd do. We're not changing scope.
Or if the built-in escalation wasn't really 44%, so 20% plus 20% on top of the thing. In a just.
Right.
The 20%, so being a 44% escalation. So if it already didn't go up that much because supply chain opens up or who knows what could happen in the next couple of years, that extra money could be spent on doing the entire elementary school roof at Manitou Springs? Or how does that get fared it out?
So. Best typically would get the money back. I mean, you can approach them and try to see what they say. I'm, I'm always someone who's like, it's never, never hurts not to ask. But typically, if you build the scope, you say you're gonna build and it comes in under, then you get, you get, you know, your portion of your money back and they get their portion of their money back.
Matt, I mean, I'm thinking about we, the potential improvements at Manitou Springs Elementary School that we've always talked about, just the nursing station there and the restrooms. Probably I would think we could fold that into the safe entry remodel of the middle circle as possible.
All right. Sounds good.
Awesome. Yeah. And you know, the match went from 65 to 75%. So we, I would think we would look appealing to about 72%. Wait, I think we would look appealing to the best, best board hopefully. So Dana, on your side, what does the board or what does the district need to do if the boards wants us to move forward?
As long as we're still looking at, at getting funding. As long as, um, we're still looking at, at getting funding, um, or at least securing funding and getting to the point where we're ready to lock a rate after June, right? Um, and we don't want to issue COPs before that, which I don't think you do, because you can't, you know, obviously unless you just, I heard a couple of things, I, I did also hear the board say that if they don't, you know, if they don't get the grant, they can use that 4 million for something else. So that's another discussion item. I, I guess if, if you know for certain that you're going to use the 4 million regardless, then, you know, you may want to consider issuing those COPs sooner rather than later to secure a lower rate. Um, if you uh, are not going to use the 4 million, if you don't get the grant, then we should probably wait and we could just go through the process of, um, putting documents together. I could send out an RFP for banks, I could get indicative rates back from banks and we could go so far as making the selection with the bank and then just locking the rate like the day after, um, that June meeting for best. And then after that, uh, after we do that, then we would come back to the board and we would actually have like an authorizing resolution, um, similar to, um, you know, some of the resolutions that were passed prior to the bond election, but it's essentially just, um, a closing document session that we would have document sign and an authorizing resolution passed. But that's the extent, um, of the work on the board's side. But from a timing perspective, the whole process would only take about a month and a half. But again, it, it kind of depends on, like I said, there's, there's two avenues. Here you go, issue the COPs now and you use that 4 million regardless of whether or not you get the grant. And in that case, we would start the process now. Um, if we're going to wait, um, then we should probably not start the process until mid-May. Does that make sense?
All right, I'm just one board member, but my whole thing is that we need to do, no matter what we do, we have to do this work, this work is needed. So I would rather if, if it was me and it was my business and my money and I'm going to have to pay it back, I would go for it at the lower interest and start the work. And if we get the best grant, then of course we're going to have receipts for the roofs and everything else that we can justify why we did this, but we've already paid ahead of time and just, and start something. We don't, this escalation cost that we've seen the last six months will continue and we'll be able to afford it.
I would agree and stay in addition than the if statement. So if best didn't come through, then having identified what portion of that 4 million, what are we going to use that for?
I would, I would say everything in the best project first, and then if there's anything additional, because that's going to get us to, um, the 4 million.
Right, I, I meant actually the opposite.
Oh, sorry.
If best does come through.
Oh, God.
And, uh, you know, so then we're going to have additional monies since best will cover that portion. What is, where would we get that whenever remaining funds we have there, just to account for it, but, um,
Yes.
But I would agree with the increased, um, rates and escalation as we see it.
One thing we'll have to do is, um, go back out for an RFP for an owner's rep and also, um, architect and those things. So, uh, it, it just gives us some options in timing. Right, Matt, is that how you see it?
Yeah, yeah, if anything through best has, you have to competitively bid all, re-competitively bid all your, your trade partners.
Well, we need to put this as an action item on our next agenda then.
Yes.
So a regular meeting.
Correct.
Sounds good.
And does that work for you? We have a meeting on the 28th of, uh, February.
I think you've answered all of our questions probably, I mean, I don't have any more questions.
I'm going to make sure for the 28th for him, if he can.
Oh, yeah.
Get that all, Dan, can you hear us? Or Garrett?
Looks like Dan might be frozen. If the 28th doesn't work for Dan, it certainly works for me, so one of us can be there.
So we need to have a resolution that, on that date or later?
That's a good question. I think we could probably, depending on what your timeline is for your following meeting, I would say you could probably even do one later, but if we can get the resolution by the 28th, there's no reason that us not have it in our pocket.
Is that something that Tim Crawford helps with or that you all?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
One touch base, so I can reach out tomorrow. Great. Thanks, Garrett. Natalie's on the call. Natalie, do you have any questions about anything?
Um, the only thing I was curious about, maybe you all answered it, was that if we don't get best this year, can we apply again next year? Or is that not?
Yeah, so you could apply again.
Because if we spend our match, which I don't have a problem doing, we just lose, we just wouldn't have a match, we couldn't do it the next time.
Yeah, and hopefully with that timeline, we'd be looking at having enough information and voter support to go for a bond package that we are assured of passing, and then that would be our match within that bond package.
Gotcha, okay, awesome, thank you, that was my only question.
And if it, if, let's say we do get best, our thinking is that we would go for another best in February of 2023 for additional matching to, to not only pay off the COP, but also for additional upgrades. So I, I think we have some, because we still have security and safety issues and everywhere.
Yes, we still have plenty.
Does that help Natalie?
Yeah, totally, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else for them?
Yep. Guys.
Thanks.
Thank you guys for your time.
Yeah, thank you, have a good night.
You as well.
Thanks, Al, for that.
Yes. Any other questions before we move on to policy review, looking at attendance?
So I, I, I really just wanted to share that this is the work that the district's multi-tiered systems of support team will be looking at in terms of, we talked about this at the retreat. And, uh, not really anything other than like these excused absence policies. So I just shared this because we talked about some of the cultural philosophical shifts that might happen. And I, I just wanted to see if you all have any questions about what this, what this might be. So even optional language on the second page, penalties may include a warning, school detention, and school. I, I never think it's appropriate for attendance issues to men out of class, so that would be one of those things that we would, I think philosophically wise, we would not penalize the child by not in school and in school suspension. But just wanted to share with you that, um, these are the things that we need to really define. Just wanted to have a discussion.
I'm sorry, I missed it then, uh, were you saying that the district OTSS team is looking at this policy now and kind of how it plays into indicators of concern?
Yes, exactly. So for example, like we have a high number of unexcused absences, um, then
Right.
we want to make sure that that's in our handbook.
So will they be bringing a, a similar policy to us? I mean, making recommendations also, will they be the ones that are kind of charged with assuming responsibility for this and present it to us?
And there are schools' representation, there's representation from all four schools. You can see in our current policy, it wasn't, last time it was reviewed was in 2007, it's very brief. And there's really not much direction.
It's just kind of like, yeah, you should show up.
You should show up. So.
Show up at school.
Yeah, so that's what our thinking is that, uh, this, this spring and hopefully have a good policy by May of this year, but also engaging parents and the.
So how are they defining excused? And so it's interesting because you get exactly to the point, I mean, we've got like a one paragraph document currently that's been in place for 15 years, going to something that's exhaustive and thorough and incredibly detailed, maybe even a bit of reaching, but that's only my opinion. How are they defining excused absences now? Since there's no definition here.
Basically, if a parent calls in and says, I'm excusing my child, and when it becomes in, in the insurance category, there are 10 and a four in a month, uh, 10 in a time period, then you start to say we need some documentation, but it's, it's really not.
But legally through Colorado law, it is the principal's discretion on what to excuse or not to excuse. That is Colorado State statute, the principal has the authority to do so. Parents don't believe that, but it is in Colorado State statute. And so, but since you don't want it to ever seem arbitrary or capricious, then you obviously need a district policy that spells it out. So it's consistent, building to building, we certainly don't want that building, um, having a policy that is different from another building.
So the district's policy would supersede the principal's opinion.
Unless it's such a rare case, and I don't think that really would be the happen. I mean, it'd be, it's, it's much easier for a principal to say, our policy is this, and have a well-written policy to stand by it.
And the other, I mean, when we think about some of our choice options as well, you know, the attendance is a reason that you could deny choice. So we want to make sure that we're consistent and fair over time. One aspect, but I, I, I can tell you this is the boil of like who has me, but I think it would be something we want to look at from our, from district ones. Oh, hey, Colleen, sorry.
We are working on language within this team for our buildings.
Yes, Colleen.
Got it.
Colleen's a good CACTI conference.
Buddy.
CACTI, the CTE, CTE.
So the MTSS is going to give us some feedback on their tweaks and this, and then we'll look at it as that.
Okay, that sounds great.
That's the, the, I just wanted to follow up on our retreat.
No, appreciate. Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, do we have a timeline on that?
I think, Colleen, do you have a, a, a thought about what the timeline for the, the DAF might be, sorry, the MTSS group? They're actually called the, the DAT, it's a strange, I, the DAT.
No, thank you.
Who died? Did that come just years ago or?
Colleen, if you can answer that question now? She might have put it in Q and A.
Okay, awesome.
Thank you. And I did want to follow up, we, in the retreat meeting, we talked about that preschool K1 to, um, in terms of suspension. The board did, uh, approve that policy and it's JKD, JKE, and actually, um, Kendall and I last week just verified that it's been updated. So that we're, we're all on track with the preschool to second grade suspension. Thanks for that.
Thank you. Um, thank you for limitations.
Uh, Theo, yeah, this is one of those options right now, I think the, in this, this monitoring report is exactly the same as last year. Others will change, so when we think about this format of, uh, work session and then a board, a regular board meeting a couple of weeks later. But, uh, honestly, I did not change anything before, I feel like Suzie and Eric every day are gaining different skills and knowledge around something where it happened to me, got hit by a bus or something like that. Um, and then, so this is a very articulated, uh, I think, plan.
Succession policy, yeah, yeah, we wrote that as like it was going to be a zombie apocalypse or something. Or some kind of like pandemic, crazy, but we didn't think it would happen, but everybody got knocked out, so.
Where, um, what's nice is, is because it's not back-to-back regular meetings, if there's something you wanted to change, we can, we could do that, or if you wanted some additional information for approval, if not, I'll just put it as a consent item in regular meetings.
Couldn't we listen to some of them recently?
Yeah. We kind of scanned through, it was just a policy. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, we're good there?
Yes.
Calendar. Look at our calendars to get all of our work sessions on, look at us, we did this in 45 minutes, less than, brushing it.
Yes.
Colleen, yeah, a lot of coffee, a lot of sugar, we need our veggies, I think five days.
We looked at if it's okay, just to kind of throw out a, the next date for the, the work session, we said that, uh, the first, let me quote. Our board meeting's on the 28th, so we turned around and did a, a work session on the 10th, that's pretty soon afterwards. So we were hoping the board would consider March 17th, because then our next board meeting isn't until March 28th, after spring break. I could do the 17th.
I could do that as well if you can, but it could not more than an hour and a half, just so I can go watch kid soccer.
I, I can watch soccer.
Okay, awesome.
Okay.
17.
Um, I do believe so. That will be, uh, we're going to Quebec to do that train, so, but it is, I this departure takes us two days to get there, so, um, I think it's going to work.
Okay. Natalie, is a 17 for you?
It does.
And then our following meeting will be the 28th before, sorry. We got the 28th and then we'll look for in April. At the April 14th then?
That's great, that's sort of the home soccer game, that'd be perfect.
I can't do the 14th.
Well, we have ours on the 18th, so would we want to go the 7th?
We're on the 28th of March, so two weeks later would be the 7th.
It's a tough one. It's going to be a week.
Or we can do the 21st. Is that what you mean?
Because of, well.
Are you in April?
Yeah, it was in April, the regular board meetings on the third Monday and on the fourth Monday. Yeah, we're on the, the regular, it's on the twice tighter. But, yeah, we could do that. But we said something going on.
Um, Natalie, anything for you, the week of the 4th?
Um, the week of the 4th.
So doing it on the show, that's what you mean?
Yeah, I mean, aside from Tuesday, I'm okay.
Okay.
So 7th?
So 7th or 14th?
So it's good.
Perfect, and then meeting on the 18th of April.
I might be working on the 7th, I might schedule that for, so, but.
We'll have to do whatever you want, right?
Yeah. You have many ways to work.
Better to have a happy doctor than a not happy doctor.
Are we starting regular meetings at 4:30 or 5?
Uh, I think we said 5, right?
You tell me what time you guys want to meet. With advance notice, I can be here at 4:00.
We have it at 5.
Okay, so everything at 5? Yes, okay, yes.
I can tell you the, in the May, the May, uh, annual planning is essentially Suzie does the, um, proposed budget presentation and we have just one policy. It's probably the lightest month for, for work, unless we want to make sure we do the work session, because I think we'll keep wanting to move forward with capital discussions pretty frequently most.
Yeah, and May is the month before we do a board retreat in June, so I think we'll want to make sure that we really nail that. Um, also, if we're doing a formative evaluation, I think we were pretty clear after this last evaluation of the superintendent's cycle, um, that we probably need to do some more work on that, just to get that fine too, when you walk into a system with no, nothing. You have to kind of have version one, two, three. And I also noticed we're going to have to look at contracts because I think we're now out of sync with what it says in the contract perhaps about the evaluation cycle, I can't remember.
We fixed it, we have that up just for, I have.
We did fix that to the summative in the, in form, okay, perfect.
That was that, uh, position.
Okay, yeah, I remember we discussed it, but I couldn't remember that we completed it, thank you. Would we decide in May? We'd meet on May 5th and go out afterwards?
This is good.
Nobody's excited like I am. It really educated me by it, because it's like a pre-signal that it's winding down.
So the truth, that's what we're doing. Did you say we're doing 4:30 or 5, I was trying to figure out.
4:30 on work sessions, 5 on regular meetings.
When do we get into like graduation and things like that? Because then if we start looking to May 19th and 20th.
Congratulations.
It's usually a memorial.
The weekend before.
The 20, I mean, around the 28, 29, is that scheduled yet?
Our board meeting?
No graduation.
Oh, yeah.
It's gonna be May 22nd.
Yeah, really?
Yeah, so we said Sunday before.
Oh, okay, I thought we had, maybe it's been missed up because.
So Sunday, which pulls up.
Yeah, we never do it on work.
Do you want to just do?
Yeah.
Maybe in June, we do the combined work session, regular meeting.
Okay.
The same night versus two, I don't, I'm just thinking about people's summer travel.
Yeah.
I don't know, probably gets retired, so. Congratulations.
So maybe just plan out to May and then.
Well, because soon we got the retreat, we're going to be hanging up the other flowers and hours.
Hours. What did we decide, we're meeting May 5th and are we having another meeting in May?
Yeah, we have, we have 8/19, okay.
Awesome.
What is the regular meeting?
8/19. Eight nineteen. Sorry, it's on the calendar, my bad.
Don't have a June retreat date. We have the work session regularly on the twentieth. If you all wanted to do a works, a retreat on the twentieth and a regular meeting all on the twentieth. Versus a work session.
Yeah, what does your June look like?
Especially on May one, what time is graduation usually?
June twentieth is.
It is? What holiday?
Thirteen, or the twenty-seven?
Have to do the twenty-seventh, that is Tina's thirtieth wedding anniversary.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. And I will hopefully be out of town somewhere. I don't even know year. Yeah, one thing's super random. We were actually thinking about taking the coast Amtrak all the way up from LA to Vancouver.
Thanks, we'll be in Vancouver that day.
Yep, and stop along the way for a whole lot of fun.
So what day were you gonna have?
Yes.
I, I have a meeting on the thirteenth, um, from four to six. Um, I am free on the sixth of June.
That, I just got a little. We could, we do a different day of the week.
I could do the, yeah, I could do the twenty-first of June.
I can't do it Tuesday.
Is it a rule we can't meet on the twentieth? I mean, I've worked on holidays, so it doesn't affect me at all, but.
I, I can meet on the twentieth.
It's a holiday for us.
Oh, is it? Okay. It is a federal holiday?
Oh, they announced it last year, that's great.
Thank you, I did not know that. Super unaware. Um, I'm getting the twenty-first, the twenty-second, twenty-third, or twenty-fourth.
So not the twenty-first or no, the twenty-second?
Say that again, the twenty?
Twenty-second, maybe?
Yeah, I can do the twenty-second.
That's our timeframe that we're thinking, if we wanna do like one o'clock on.
One to. One to four for thirty?
Or do you want to just hold the day and determine what we need as we enclose for the day?
That's fine, I can block out.
So like one, I'll just block, like kind of guess one to four and then. Start the regular, regular meeting. Just kind of put it on hold, okay?
Yeah, so do the, so that day we'll do the work session and the regular meeting altogether.
Yeah, I think if we could do a retreat, I don't know, we could, unless you all want to do a retreat work session and. Maybe do that. If it's a shorter retreat, a little bit of.
A shorter retreat would be good.
Okay.
Do you think the twenty-second?
Twenty-second, yes.
Cause obviously people have summer plans.
Yes.
That'll probably be a truncated retreat.
Yeah.
Yeah. We'll do a lot more work and.
So I have a calendar, a, a conference, but I don't know dates and times yet. I. And there's a chance I'm gonna be at a conference, but I don't, cause I don't know if I can have the whole day, but I don't know the details of the conference yet.
Well, we're just, Matt, we just blocked out the whole day. We're not saying we want to be together the whole day.
Okay. It was supposed to be for a few hours and. And I don't know if I can do the whole day, but okay, great. Um, I, yeah, I can't, I don't have enough information to know if I'm free all day on the twenty-second. That's all I'm saying, so, but it sounds like that's not a problem.
Yeah, it's not a problem.
Tina, what if we looked at the fifteenth, that's a new past bosom day? Oh, well, that would be silly.
So you say, yeah, we do twenty-second. They love that.
I mean, we, we have more flexibility during the day to meet earlier as well, so we, like, so we can see what.
We can see how it.
Yeah.
Well, just kind of pin some on that.
Okay, pretty good. Meeting adjourned.